I'll call the meeting back to order.
Carl Hess.
We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is review the final environmental impact report for the Atherton Library Building Project and review and comment on the draft mitigation monitor and report.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement on record just before we start the thing? And that is that there's a question as to whether I'm conflicted about this matter. And I had some discussions with the city attorney, and I'd like to go on the record as to why I'm going to continue to sit on it. And that is that there's a question as to most matters, if you're within 500 feet, if you live within 500 feet of the subject property, you are not allowed to hear the matter. This is a little complicated because it's 500 feet of what? The park where the library is going to be or the current library? And so it's a little bit ambiguous as to whether I'm conflicted about it or not. And so my analysis is as follows, that if this was a decision about where to put the park, I think I would be --
Where to put the library?
Oh, sorry, where to put the library. I think I would be conflicted, and I shouldn't sit on it. However, this is not about where to put the park, it's simply whether the EIR is sufficient. And so as a result, I don't think that is a conflict that would disqualify me from considering this matter, and that's why I'm going to continue to sit.
Thank you.
I've reviewed this with the city attorney. He will, he's not my lawyer, so he won't give me any advice, but he's not, I think he's going to recommend that I sit down.
No, actually, I do give advice. It's just in the end, individual members have to decide what they're going to do. You could go against legal advice if you want. In this case, it's not going against legal advice because this is kind of a fence center. And my initial reaction was it's almost silly to disqualify somebody because of the concept that looking at an EIR or determining adequacy of an EIR would somehow affect their property values 407 feet away. It doesn't make no sense to me, so I'm finding the decision to disobey.
Okay. My prayer. Also, matter of procedure, I ask counsel before we started meeting to repeat and clearly force whether members of the planning commission are able to comment on the location of the library. And I would ask him to repeat that for the entire commission.
Well, the only thing before you tonight really is the adequacy of the EIR. Part of that has to do with the location of this facility. If the question is, can you comment on the EIR answering the question? Sure. But in terms of should it go A, B, C, or D, the answer is that's not before you, so that would probably be outside the scope of tonight's hearing. The only thing that you're talking about tonight is did the EIR consultant look at all the issues and listen to all the comments, provide responses to them in an adequate manner so that the environmental issues are thoroughly understood by the city council when they make the decision? That's really the only thing that's before you.
Second question, can we comment on whether we like it in place A, B, C, or D?
You actually shouldn't because I don't think that's, there's no project before you tonight. The only thing is before you is a guy --
No, not tonight, sorry. After this meeting and in our general daily lives, if we were asked by someone --
My advice is no. And the reason is, well, except for Kristy, who won't have a conflict shortly. But the real reason is because this is only the environmental aspect of the whole decision-making tree. You still have potentially zoning issues, general plan issues, and ultimately a project issue. So because of that, if you were to run around now going Eureka, we're free, and start talking about things, you actually can prejudice yourself and conflict yourself out of further participation. So since this is really just the tip of the iceberg, I think the wisdom is don't participate in discussing it.
Thank you. Are there any other statements to be made before we go on to the summary?
Before we start?
I've got a question for the city attorney. Because if you're commenting, if they're commenting on the city, the EIR, I don't see how they can avoid not saying under a set of circumstances then traffic would be bad if it were here. And could that be construed as an opinion or, I mean?
Let me see if I can explain. Their job tonight is not to comment on is the traffic good or bad. Their job is to comment on whether or not the EIR looked at the traffic. That's the only issue they're looking at, did the EIR look at the potential environmental issues and comment and answer the comments that people made about the draft EIR, either in writing or at the hearing on the matter. That's all they're going to talk about. They're not going to talk about good, bad, is do I agree with the traffic engineer, or do I agree with somebody else's comments? That's not the issue. The issue is was the EIR adequate in covering the issues? It's not about do I like the issue or do I like the coverage, was it adequate?
But I have a logical question. Why you and EIR, if quality questions are not also involved? For example, you know, in exact, why you and EIR, for example, like at the last planning meeting, it was saying, it doesn't seem to be, one commissioner was saying, it doesn't make sense that you're going to have a traffic light 300 feet from another traffic light. And it would seem that that was going, would lead to some sort of opinion.
And ultimately, it will. This is not that meeting. This is the meeting where they --
And so they're, so they're not, all of those conclusions?
Let me see if I can read this very concisely. No, ma'am, and let me finish.
Okay.
The only thing this meeting is doing is determining whether the EIR was adequately prepared so that when the project goes to the city council for ultimate decision, all of the environmental issues have been looked at and reviewed in a way that lets them make a decision based on potential environmental impacts. That's all this meeting is about.
Yes, but I would think that if one feels that they have either admitted or inaccurate, that's --
Well, that's whether or not it's adequate.
Adequate. That would be part of the adequacy test.
The, basically, the courts have held that an EIR should, when looked at as a whole, provide a reasonable, good faith disclosure and analysis of environmental impacts. That's all. It doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to be all encompassing, and to quote the court, it does not have to be exhaustive. It just has to give a pretty good overview of the environmental issues and respond to any comments using experts to give you, to give the city council the information they need before they take action. That's all.
So the town council's relationship to the planning commission is just sort of to give a patina of expertise? Because, I mean, why not the planning commission, they're not allowed to say, this is a good idea or better?
I think we're getting far afield. If you'd like to talk to me some other time, right now, they have business to do.
Actually, I don't want to, but that's all right, because I don't understand.
Let's move on. I think we, as commissioners, recognize our power.
I have a question.
Our lack of --
Could you read that last paragraph about what says about that? I didn't take the right notes.
It just says, essentially, it lists a whole bunch of criteria for determining adequacy. And then it says, "Courts have held that an EIR should, when looked at as a whole, provide a reasonable, good faith disclosure and analysis of environmental impacts." And sufficient information should be provided to allow decision-makers and the public to understand the environmental consequences of a project. It doesn't have to be exhaustive, it doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to be exact, it just has to be a reasonable, good faith effort to put the environmental issues out there and then have potential mitigation measures, if any are available, discussed in the document. And to have the ability for the public to make comments and have the EIR respond to each and every one of those comments.
Then our action tonight, as we have it here, is to recommend the city council certify the final EIR.
Correct.
But certification means to formally confirm as true and accurate or genuine.
Not under SEQA rules. You're quoting a dictionary definition.
I am.
No.
But I'm concerned about the word certify.
Certified? Well, at this level, you're not going to certify it, so it really shouldn't concern you too much. And at the, all you're doing is determining whether or not to recommend to the city council whether or not you think the environmental issues have been looked at and adequately discussed and kicked around by the EIR consultant to a point where the city council could make an informed decision only about the environmental issues, nothing else. It's a pretty simple thing, and unfortunately, people got hung up on dictionary definitions long ago, and the courts have said not exact, not exhaustive, it's, to quote the military, it's a close enough rule. Close enough that somebody can make a knowing decision without being shocked to find out there's a legless lizard somewhere, or something along those lines.
Thank you. Our last staff to start our discussion.
Thank you. As you recall, the planning commission reviewed the draft environmental impact report at your April meeting, and we received a number of comments at that meeting. We've also received a number of public comments. The public comment period, I think they got closed. Thank you. And what LSA has done since that time has prepared a response to comment document, and together with your draft environmental impact report comprises the final environmental impact report. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to LSA to kind of walk you through the document. She'll be on.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. Teresa. So, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Teresa Wallace. I'm the project manager for the Atherton Library Building Project Environmental Review. I'm a senior planner with LSA Associates, and we have been the environmental consultants for the town on this project. With me tonight is Megan Mesias. She's LSA's principal transportation planner, and she prepared the transportation analysis for the environmental review. So as you know, and as we've discussed, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider the final EIR for the library project and not to consider a critical of the project itself. And so I'm going to just quickly provide you with an overview of where we are in the environmental process. And first, I will summarize the SEQA process that we have followed to date, and then summarize the contents of the draft EIR and the response to comments document. So the SEQA process for this project began last November, and was preparation of the draft EIR. The town had then called the public a specific meeting on December 8th. The draft EIR was published on March 23rd, and on April 25th, the planning commission called the public during to receive comments on the draft EIR. So the comment period, as we just said, ended on May 7th, and a response to comments document was published on June 15th. The response to comments document and mitigation monitoring reporting program, or the NMRT, which was attached to your staff report, together with the draft EIR constitutes the final EIR. So after tonight's meeting, the city council will consider your recommendation regarding certification of the EIR. So to summarize the results of the EIR analysis, I'm just going to say, our first step for the environmental evaluation of the project was to prepare an initial study to consider all of the SEQA topics and identify those which did not need in-depth analysis or further evaluation as topical sections in the draft EIR. The initial study is included as appendix B to the draft EIR. The analysis in the initial study and draft EIR concluded that the project would result in either no impact or less than significant impact to the following: to agricultural, forestry, and mineral resources, historic resources, land use and planning, population and housing, fire, least school, park and recreation services, utilities and service systems, and also visual resources. The initial study in the draft EIR also recommended standard construction period mitigation measures to reduce potentially significant impacts to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards, hydrology and water quality, and also noise. So the draft EIR did identify a potential project-related impacts to transportation, circulation, and parking. Impacts were identified for the intersections in Middlefield and Watkins, and also El Camino Real and Watkins Avenue. Potential impacts to the available parking supply were also identified during periods of peak use in the park. Mitigation measures were recommended in the draft EIR to reduce all of those impacts to a less than significant level. However, it is unlikely that the mitigation measure recommended for El Camino Real and Watkins Avenue will be implemented. So although the relative impact of the additional trips associated with the project at this intersection is actually very minor, it would likely be triggered with the addition of any traffic at this intersection, the impact here is considered to be significant and unavoidable because the recommended right turn lane at the intersection may not actually be installed. So the draft EIR also considered alternatives to the project, including construction of a smaller 10,000 square foot library within the park, also a new library at the North Meadows site in the park, development of a new library at the existing library site, and also it looked at a new library at the town center. The draft EIR determined that the smaller library in the park would be the environmentally superior alternative because it would reduce some of the impacts to the project and it would not create new environmental impacts as some of the other alternatives would. So all of this information that I've just done over is in the summary chapter of the draft EIR. So now, the response to comments document was prepared after the close of the SEQA mandated 45-day comment period on the draft EIR. Verbal comments provided at the hearing and all SEQA-related written comments received during the comment period were responded to in this document. The town received a total of nine comment letters from state agencies and local representatives, and 40 letters from individuals. The only state or regional agency that commented on the draft EIR was Caltrans. The response to comments document lists all of the agencies, representatives, and individuals that commented on the EIR, and also includes copies of all those comments. The written response to each SEQA-related comment is also included. But finally, the document also includes any corrections or clarifications to the draft EIR that were made in response to those comments. The response to comments document includes eight master responses, which address variations of key issues that were brought up by a number of commenters. These include comprehensive responses to comments on the project description and definition of library operations and service areas, adequacy of alternatives analysis, the evaluation of social and economic effects of the project, questions about the proposed general plan, park master plan, and zoning amendments, and the project's consistency with adopted planning policies. Also, identification of intersection impacts associated with the existing library and town center site alternatives, who looked at additional intersections for those. The effect of the recently occupied medical office building on traffic and circulation at El Camino and Watkins. Comments and suggestions related to the right turn lane recommendations for the El Camino and Watkins intersection impact, and also requests for recirculation of the draft EIR. So LSA and town staff, after responding to the comments, ultimately concluded that none of the comments on the draft EIR disclosed any new significant information, no new significant or substantially more severe environmental impacts have been identified, and no new feasible mitigation measures or alternatives have been identified which are considerably different from others previously analyzed, and that the draft EIR did not require a recirculation. So that concludes my summary of the EIR process that has occurred to date. One final point that I want to make about the adequacy of the final EIR, which we obviously discussed a little bit, that I'd just like to add to. So you're being asked tonight to determine whether or not the final EIR is adequate. I'm just going to read from section 15151 of the SEQA guidelines, which discuss the standards of adequacy for an EIR. The SEQA states, "An EIR should be prepared with a sufficient degree of analysis to provide decision-makers with information which enables them to make a decision, which intelligently takes account of the environmental consequences. An evaluation of the environmental effects of a project may not be exhaustive, but a sufficiency of an EIR is to be reviewed in light of what is reasonably feasible. Disagreement among experts does not make an EIR inadequate, and the courts have looked not for perfection, adequacy, completeness, and a good faith effort at full disclosure." So really, the basic purposes of SEQA are to inform the public decision-makers of the environmental effects of a project, identify ways in which adverse environmental effects can be avoided or reduced, prevent impacts to the environment where feasible, and to disclose to the public the reasons why the lead agency may choose to approve a project which has adverse environmental effects. So the adequacy of an EIR is determined in terms of what is reasonably feasible in light of factors such as magnitude of the project, how big is it, the severity of its harmful environmental impacts, and the geographic scope of the project. So the planning commission is being asked tonight to determine if the basic purposes of SEQA have been fulfilled and if, based on your own independent judgment, the EIR is adequate or not. So that concludes my summary.
Sort of correct. Let me just point out that normally that would be totally correct, but in this case, because of the process that we are following, the city council is the only body that is going to make any determinations as to adequacy. The only thing that the planning commission is asked to do is make a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not you believe this to be adequate, based on your experience in the planning field. The other thing is, you know, because the question was asked about certification, what does that really mean, certification of the EIR? It's special, and under the EIR regulations, it basically, the lead agency has to adopt the final EIR by certifying that, one, it complies with SEQA, two, it reflects the lead agency's independent judgment and analysis, and three, it was presented to the decision-making body, city council, which reviewed and considered the information in the final EIR before approving the project. That's what certification means under SEQA. It doesn't mean that you're certifying that it's true. If that were the case, no EIR would ever be certified, because you would have very little information upon which to base your belief that it was true or false. So hopefully, that gives you enough information to confuse.
Well, I've finished, so, there are any questions?
Any further questions? Now, by certifying this, because it talks about experts, are we considered experts? And if we are?
No one can say we're experts.
It's rhetorical. But is there any, shall I say, exposure to legal process because we may or may not certify?
A, you're not experts. B, there is no exposure. C, you're not certifying the EIR, you're talking about whether to recommend to the city council it's adequate.
Okay. Thank you. And you used the term "close enough."
That's my own personal synopsis of, I can give you a lot of legal jargon that would take a long time. The bottom line is the courts say, doesn't have to be perfect, doesn't have to be exact, doesn't have to be exhaustive. Basically, it's supposed to give a good faith effort at describing the potential environmental impacts.
As in, close enough, hand grenades and horseshoes?
Yes.
We will, no further questions of staff? We'll then move to the public comment section in our hearing. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak?
My name is Annie Mertens. You said that you mailed letters, there are letters. Did you mail those letters to the people who wrote letters to you?
Yes, a copy of the notice was sent to everyone that provided a comment on the EIR.
A copy of the notice that the final EIR was available to be viewed in the city hall. And is it, considering that people have lives, what is today, today is what, the 27th?
27th.
And it was made available on the 15th. So that gives us, what, 12 days, including weekends, you know, for people to get to city hall and read the document? I think that that's kind of a too short period of time. I certainly haven't the time to read your responses, but I see that from your statement that the draft EIR was adequate is your ultimate conclusion to all the questions that were raised. I would just sort of say, well, then why was everybody raising so many questions? And why were there things sort of brought out? I mean, you're tearing down an existing building in the park, building a much larger building in the park, limiting income stream from pavilion activities to the city, not looking at expanding the park in its, the library's present place, or not looking at email, ebooks, and the effect that ebooks has, and that this is a wealthy community and a lot of people access, they're reading materials electronically. And I mean, the necessity of perhaps putting an expensive park in like 300 feet from an already existing traffic signal, it seems to me that there's an awful lot of impacts that, an awful lot of problems with the initial EIR. So I'm really shocked that you said you looked at the objections and stuck to your original opinion. I don't know, if you could, could you read me the part about the existence of this 52, 50 parking place or 48 parking place medical center that's going to go on to Watkins and Ingress and Egress, which is right across?
Mr. Chairman, I think she needs to address her questions to the chair. The chair will decide, the staff is going to answer your questions.
Oh, okay. Well, could you ask the lady from LSA to read me the sections and how those are not, and explain to me how those are not adequate solutions, the ones that you have in the EIR, how they're satisfied by what else you've answered? If that makes any sense. We're doing a lot of governmental doublespeak here. I mean, you know, the planning is supposed to give an opinion, but no, they're just supposed to not give an opinion that affirmed, but what does certify mean?
In effect, you're asking what the EIR, how they're taking into account the medical building and the parking that's there.
And parking issues, and the right turn lane, and taking property, and how they seem to just affirm what's in the draft EIR, where it seems to me there were some really serious issues. And I'd just like to hear what your answers are to some of those issues.
Well, you can't ask them to repeat the entire draft, but someone can ask some specific questions.
Yeah.
And you've asked two, and they're all focused around the intersection at Atherton and El Camino. Would you care to answer that?
Well, I would say that we have rather lengthy responses to all of the comments on the draft EIR, and some of those have been organized into master responses, which are also lengthy and have technical data. I can certainly read some of the analysis, too, if that's what you would like. I have two paragraphs written up on the medical office building at El Camino. I have two paragraphs written up on the medical office building at El Camino and Watkins.
Well, we're not going to get into any...
I was just wondering if you could paraphrase the paragraphs? I mean...
Well, essentially, we looked at the additional traffic of that newly occupied building, and it does not change the conclusions of our analysis.
And can you justify why it doesn't?
We've written here, "The 11,000-square-foot medical office building would generate approximately 397 daily trips, of which 25 would occur during the AM peak hour and 38 would occur during the PM peak hour, according to ITE trip generation rates. These trips would primarily access the medical office building from the intersection at El Camino and Watkins. A few trips may, however, utilize the intersection in Middlefield and Watkins to access the new building." The results are provided on the table, and basically what it says is that adding medical office trips to the intersections of El Camino Real and Watkins, and also Middlefield and Watkins, the traffic, oh, sorry, showing the conclusions remain as stated on pages 106 and 107 of the draft EIR, and the impact is the same with or without the addition of traffic generated by the medical office building. The impact in the intersection of Middlefield and Watkins would be less than significant after mitigation, and El Camino and Watkins intersection was still significant and unavoidable." So, we did run the model on those new trips from that building, and it didn't change our conclusions.
Now, my understanding is, is that if we had a dedicated right turn lane, it would sort of come down to, sort of wipe out our driveway, or come down to the very almost end of our driveway, except for two feet. I'm talking about that which touches, presently touches Marsh Road, and you're also aware that the Ingress and Egress for the medical building is directly opposite of our driveway. So, I, you know, and you don't see that creating any kind of traffic hazards or anything like that?
Yes. Just to clarify, you're expressing a concern about the traffic in the medical office building, and specifically what we have to do...
And with traffic, other traffic, you know, people using Marsh as a cut through to Medlo Park.
Yeah, I understand, but the purpose of this EIR was to look at the impact of traffic from the proposed library building project. And so, the way that we would consider the traffic from the medical office building is to add it to the existing traffic, and that becomes what we call our background or our baseline. So, the baseline that we considered in the EIR without the addition of the office building already had a deficiency of that intersection. So, in terms of whether or not there is a deficiency, I don't think that there's a disagreement with what you're saying, and you're expressing some concern that there is an inadequacy in the traffic operations of that intersection.
Yes.
Which is fully disclosed in the document. What happens, though, is when we add on the trips from the project, which is the library, the question becomes, is there a significant impact based upon the criteria that the town uses? And the answer to that question is, yes, there is a significant impact, both without the office building and with the office building. So, the questions and the concerns that you're raising really aren't relevant to the library project, they're more relevant to the office building project. And so, therefore, in terms of how we can address them in this document, the library can't be made to mitigate the impacts of the office building.
I understand, but at the same time, the fact that the office building exists and increases the traffic is going, is an argument against locating the library in the park because there's going to be more use on Marsh. And even though you're counting from how many people, I guess, come and go from the library in the park, it's still going to meet up with, aside from all the people who use it as a cut through to get home to Medlo Park, it's going to meet up with these people who are going in and out of the traffic building, not just in the AM peak, but all day, as the people who work there going to lunches, dental appointments are usually, like, every quarter.
And what you're saying is probably not untrue, and the traffic that's analyzed in here is, includes, or I should say, the traffic that's analyzed, and I say "in here," I mean the response to comments document, which includes a revised analysis that has the office building. So, all of that traffic has been analyzed, but the question is, was that analysis prepared correctly, and are the conclusions of the analysis, you know, correct? Or I should say, as the city attorney has said, are they, you know, adequate enough to provide a disclosure of environmental impacts? And I think what you're addressing is whether or not the library should be located in a certain location. And so, the question tonight is not the location of the library, it's the...
I'm talking about the effect of the traffic on the location of the library, because it seems to me that the draft ERR made a statement that Holbert Palmer Park was the best place for the library, considering all these environmental considerations.
That's incorrect.
That is incorrect.
That's it? Ma'am, can I point out to the commissioner? Here's a good example of where we're not supposed to go. We're not supposed to be talking about what's going to happen with the traffic from a particular element or anything else. The question is, was it looked at? And if the answer is, yes, it was looked at and it was commented on, then really, that's what the environmental document is supposed to do. It's not supposed to solve all the problems. That issue is when it comes before the city council for determination, are you going to put in place certain mitigation measures that will lessen the impacts potentially? They're not going to make that decision tonight, they're not even going to look at that decision tonight. The city council will look at that when this comes to the city council to determine ultimately if the project is appropriate or not. So, you're begging a question that they're not supposed to be looking at or answering.
Well, perhaps also an answer is being picked here in that it seems to me that the draft ERR did make some kind of a thing, statement, saying that the least environmental, negative environmental impacts would be if the library was located in the park. Now, I don't know if I...
But that is irrelevant to the decision they're making tonight, because they don't care about environmentally, which one is superior or not. The only thing they're supposed to...